It's okay.
Yeah. I shouldn't microphone for Sammy anymore because we're going to use the music.
Really?
Yeah.
I'm like, oh. It's everyone. Come on. No, the other day I had a hard time with whoever, but he went back.
Yeah, I went back and listened to the meeting and it was very difficult to hear.
Yes, and when we talk, they really want us to make sure.
All right, I'll say.
You sure?
Yeah.
Well, good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the Farmington School Board meeting for April 7th, 2025. And would we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I believe that it is now time to entertain a motion for a new chair.
I'd like to nominate Joel Sagan to be chair.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, discussion?
Discussion.
Well, typically, we would, we would ask if there's another nomination for chairs.
Is there another nomination? No, thank you. Okay, discussion. Can we vote now? All in favor?
Aye.
Sounds like it's unanimous. And it's all over to you, Mr. Sagan.
I don't even have to move my seat. Thank you. Uh, okay, we need a nomination for vice chair.
I nominate Stacy Lozey.
Motion by Mrs. Parker to nominate Stacy.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Doyle.
Sorry, I was writing stuff down.
Any discussion? You accept that nomination?
I do, I was gonna.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're gonna go down, uh, this is typically when we look at our different committees and, um, negotiations and things of that sort, put it together. So, uh, Policy Committee. Currently, we have Nicole and Sharon on this committee. I guess we can have discussion about who has an interest in either staying on it or making the change as opposed to an official nominee, and then we can do a nomination by vote. So, how do, how do folks feel about Policy Committee? Anybody have an interest that hasn't been on it that wants to be? Anybody wanna get off of it that, that is, prefer to stay on it?
I'm fine with staying on it. I feel like we're finally like starting to get into the swing of like getting through all of the policies. We figured out like the annual ones that need to be done. We have, um, and actually, I think we might need to share with you too, Giselle, so we could, if we stay on it, we could get together with you. Um, we have some like Google Sheets, so, to track some things. So, I'm fine with staying on it unless someone else is beating down the door and wants to take over, but.
Do you feel the same way, Sharon?
Yeah, I do. I mean, it's, I'd stay with what we know.
I think you've made great progress.
Yeah, and you know, it's nice when the board, when the board does stay intact after, after a recent election, there's some continuity, you know, you, the two of you, you kinda know where you're at.
Mm-hmm, sorta.
So, um, I'll make a motion, uh, for, um, Mrs. Doyle and Mrs. Johnston to remain on Policy Committee.
Second?
Second by Mrs. Parker. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, Budget Committee.
Don't all jump at once, folks.
It has been, Mrs. Parker, for the past couple of years.
Mm-hmm.
What are your thoughts?
Um, so I've actually put a lot of thought into it, and I'm having a tough time because I can't do a lot of the committees because of my new work schedule.
Mm-hmm.
And budget, I can because it's in the evening. So, I really wanted to give it up, but I think it's my responsibility to keep it going because I can do everything that's required in the Budget Committee where a lot of this stuff, I'm, I can't, and I feel really badly about that, so.
Mm-hmm.
I would like to stay.
I get it. I mean, there were a time when I had a lot more free time.
Right, right. Yeah, the first year I did, and now things have changed.
Sorry to interrupt that. I just uploaded to the board folder a blank copy of the list, or in case anybody wanted it.
Uh, okay, so.
And I think Jess has done a good job, too. Like, I mean, she was new to it. You've learned a lot. You've put a lot of time and effort into it, so, similar to like Sharon and I, like, you know, when you were staying on something, like hopefully now, it's like things will start to get a little.
Routine.
Not necessarily, yes, routine.
Yes.
Not necessarily easier, but.
Mrs. Lozey, you were the alternate. Is there anybody that? How you feel about that?
She stepped in once, I think, right?
Yes.
I think you were, you helped me at a couple meetings, but you sat at the table, I think, just, there was one time I couldn't be there, so.
So, being alternate was an easy job with you at the helm?
Yes.
Anybody else have a desire to wanna be alternate? Do you mind staying on as an alternate?
It's fine, unless, you know, anybody, anybody jumping at it. And it's, what, Wednesday night?
Tuesdays.
Tuesday. I don't know, I swear it's Wednesday. I say that all the time.
You used to be on Tuesdays.
I think one that you attended wasn't like a Tuesday, or maybe it was, I don't know. I thought it was like a different date that.
And sometimes they are, yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion to have, uh, Mrs. Parker and Mrs. Lozey as her alternative, alternate for the Budget Committee.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Lozey.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Johnston. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, Buildings and Grounds. Um, I have been on that. I don't mind staying on it. Uh, we've, I've, I toured all three buildings at, um, last school year with Larry just to sort of get the lay of any concerns he had. Typically, isn't something that meets regularly unless we have an issue with some buildings and grounds that we need to take a look at, but I, I, I don't mind staying on it unless somebody has a desire to wanna do it. Okay?
I think.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'm good. I think, I think it makes sense for you to just stay. I mean, you've already done some of that work. You've met with them. You're familiar with it, so, again, if you're willing to, why recreate the wheel and?
You willing to make that motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to nominate Joel.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Johnston. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, CIP Committee, we didn't.
We didn't have anybody?
Do that, capital improvement?
Oh, yeah. I think, what, if I remember correctly, the last time we reorged, the town had, hadn't had a capital improvement meeting in quite some time, so we kinda.
And they haven't asked us since to.
No, so.
We had just said it was like not applicable. When I look back at the notes, like just.
Yeah.
Because, and then if it came up and someone needed to, we could figure it out. We can address and figure it out.
If they needed a representative, if they reinvigorate that committee, we can nominate somebody at that time.
Okay. Health and Wellness, oh, it's, I guess we'd call it Safety Committee, right? Is that what the Safety Committee was?
Safety Committee, isn't that something different?
How come we don't have it on here?
Um, that, is that might be an older copy? Oh, no, Emergency Management Committee.
Yeah, major, Emergency Management, we considered as safety.
Oh, sorry, I gotta see it now.
Health and Wellness, we just had to put someone on there because legally, per the policy, like, we have to have a representative from like admin and this, different ones from the school, and we had to have a school board. So, if they have a meeting and they needed us to do something, or the once-a-year annual report.
Did they have a meeting?
I've never been to one. I know, I think I was on it previously, but I.
Do you wanna, you know, just in case there is one?
That's fine, yeah.
Uh, I'll make a motion, Mrs. Lozey, on Health and Wellness.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, Data Governance Planning. That was you.
Yeah, that goes along with, it basically coincides with policy because data governance is like once a year that policy is due, so we have to, the superintendent reviews it, goes over it with us. We take a look at it. We make sure everything is the way that it is and that we submitted, so.
So, it was you with Sharon as an alternate?
Yeah, right.
I'm fine.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I mean, it goes right, it's in line with policy, so.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um. Audit Committee. That was you.
I didn't do anything. There weren't any meetings.
Well.
There weren't? Well, although, you kept your pulse.
I was gonna say, you were the contact.
You kept your finger on that pulse of audit, um.
That's true.
Audit, progress.
Yeah, yeah.
And you were, I mean.
Yeah, there weren't meetings, but I, yeah.
You were good at it.
Okay.
You were actually the voice, I mean, and I think it's important for folks at home to know this, too. You were really the voice of the board in that, unless I needed to, you needed to involve the chair, which you did at times.
Right.
But, um, um, do you mind doing that?
I can do that, yep, yep.
I think it makes sense.
And Giselle's taken a lot of that now.
Mm-hmm.
I haven't talked, like I said, I haven't talked to Mike since January 1st.
Well, that's not a bad thing.
No, it's not a good thing. Nope, it's great.
Um.
And you're already familiar with it, so.
Right. Yeah, that makes sense.
I'll nominate Jess.
I'll second.
Just stay on.
I'm sure by Mrs. Doyle, second by Mrs. Johnston. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, Negotiations. We have.
You and I.
Teachers coming up, right?
We have teachers this year, right? Teacher contract coming up?
Mm-hmm.
Um. I personally, we, Sharon and I did, um, Sharon and I did, um, custodians this year. Uh, I would prefer not to be on the teacher, um, negotiation team. So, I don't know if anybody else. I, I, I think it should alternate, negotiations should alternate. I think it's important for all board members to have a chance to negotiate a contract, no matter what the entity is. You know what's interesting? In Rochester, they all fall under one.
Mm-hmm.
Imagine that? Yeah.
Yeah, they do in most school districts.
Yeah. Yes, I couldn't believe it.
I, I mean, I've never been in a school district before with.
Yeah, I went to a meeting and they were all there. I said, "Oh, look at that." Anyway, uh, still staggering certain negotiations, but it's all, it falls under the same umbrella, which is interesting. All right, so.
I do feel like Sharon, I feel like you're extremely valuable, especially with the knowledge that you have. I know it's a lot of work. I know it's a lot of commitment, but I just feel like you offer so much, and I think it's really, really important to have a board member who has as much knowledge around negotiations that you do. I, I really do.
I don't mind doing it, but I'm not doing it by myself.
Oh, no. We have to have two of us, yeah.
I, I'll echo that. I mean, I think I said this in my report to, in the annual report this year, is that, and I know I've been on here now, this is my, we started my 13th year on the board, and working with Sharon was a pleasure. Um, she really carried, uh, our, our team, uh, through the, the custodial negotiations. And, and we did a lot of, uh, it wasn't, it wasn't your normal year for negotiating because we condensed steps. And that's not always easy to do or easy to sell, but she was able to accomplish that. And, um, yeah, I mean, clearly, that's your wheelhouse, so I'm glad that you're willing to stay on, if someone willing to join her to negotiate with the teachers.
I did the last one.
With me?
Well, no, I, uh, well, paras, yes, but I did the last teacher contract.
Oh.
So, I don't, I don't know what that means. I don't know.
Do you have an interest in it, or would?
I mean. I can, if nobody else wants to do it.
Do you have an interest in it?
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind doing it. That's fine, yeah.
It's, it's.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it to pass the buck. It is a good experience as a board member to do at least one. I mean, I think, no.
Yeah, I've been part in negotiations, I mean, being in education, so I'm familiar with it, so.
Perfect.
I mean, I don't.
I'm on the other side of the seat.
Now I'm on the other side, yep.
All right, so, you make that motion?
I'll make a motion to have Sharon and Nicole on the negotiation committee.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Lozey.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Parker. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Learning enhancement, which, here's my question on learning enhancement, Mrs. Palmeroy. Is that still happening at the building levels, at the district level?
No, because we started doing, we, we made that shift from learning enhancement more toward like PLCs. We, we agreed that we wanted to have more building level, right? Like, we wanted to have the building level like true PLCs, and then on top of building level, like admin meeting together, district-wide, so we could really have that cohesiveness, if I recall. Am I, am I?
No, you're, you're right. I think we wanted to be, I think we named somebody to the committee last time, or?
Yeah, Jessica and I were on the, were named on the committee, but I, we didn't do anything.
Well, 'cause I think we left it as if they wanted a, or needed a board member present.
We opened up the meeting. We had a meeting here and laid out our next steps, and then my employment changed, and that was, I didn't do anything else.
I think the one thing to remember about learning enhancement is that it's the one time that admin gets to talk to board members kind of off the record, and so that's kinda nice, um, 'cause we don't have office hours like, like the teachers do.
Right.
So, it was a really nice time to sort of bounce some things off of people. It just wasn't continuing.
But we also, at last year's office hours, and I wanna say it was the spring office hours, there was teacher, there were teachers that were still asking for that committee to, and I don't know, um, I didn't get a sense of why, but I felt that, I get the sense that they felt it was important enough for us to continue that work. But if it's not happening right now without us.
Right.
What, you know?
I feel like if you know.
And it's hard because you've stepped into a new role.
Yeah.
But what, how, why do you, from your old seat or current half-seat, what, what do you think has contributed to it not meeting as often?
I, I don't feel like there was commitment at the SAU to make it happen.
Okay.
So, um, I think there would be in the future.
Yeah, because when I came on my first year, I went to quite a few learning enhancement committee meetings with you.
Yeah.
Or one or the other. And the superintendent was organizing those, and then there was the shift with, um, there was a shift there at the SAU, and then we had our curriculum coordinator kind of stepping in and trying to continue to hold those meetings. And then I kinda feel like it fizzled out, for a lack of better words, after that, because I know there was a lot of changes. And then we had talked about, go ahead, Stace.
No, I was just saying, it was summer. We didn't need to, we weren't meeting as often, and then I think with all.
Well, we were meeting that summer quite often, but not for learning enhancement.
Yes. I just think that it's certainly something we can.
'Cause like, think about how excited we would get on certain things.
Yeah.
And it was just like a really nice.
It was good conversation. It really was, whether it was curriculum or scheduling or, and that's where some of those ideas came from, like, especially at the high school with like advisory and switching to the, like, study hall and, uh, I mean, there was a lot of other things that were discussed, too, but I'm just thinking of like some things that, so, I do think it's important, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, let's keep it going. It was Sharon and Jess, um, but does anybody have a desire to, you know, learning enhancement?
I'll do it again.
I think it's gonna be hard for Jess. I don't wanna speak for you. You can't because it's.
It's after school.
Yeah, or during the day.
Right.
Like, sometimes it was during the day or morning, so.
Yep, I will bow out.
You wanna stay on Sharon?
Well, I'm just, um, processing it in my mind. How much time is the negotiations going to take?
Yeah.
I mean, those, I mean.
Or can we have one with an alternate?
Yeah.
Maybe the alternate position can float between you two or something.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's fine.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion.
So.
I'll like.
Well. I'll make a.
No, I'll make it. I'll make the motion for, uh, Mrs. Lozey with alternates will be, if we need alternates, Sharon and Nicole, um, or if we needed, if for some reason we thought we needed a second board member at a particular meeting.
Yeah.
That's my motion.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Parker. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Community engagement, we tabled last year, so maybe, anybody think we need it right now?
No.
Okay. Uh. Yes.
Student representative.
Yeah.
Do they have to be a high school?
According, I asked you there, remember?
'Cause they thought they were the eighth grader ones.
What did the policy?
I read, I read, um.
I thought you read it.
I read the law, I read the law, but it was before I went on my vacation.
Yeah.
They can, there, you can be more than one. I think it does say high school because it also says something about them that they can get credit for doing it, too, towards graduation. And before I went away, there were a couple of girls that were interested that were on the basketball team, but I don't think that they came forward while it was gone.
I'd be curious to know what kind of effort we really put into looking for one, you know? No, no, I mean, well, it's high school.
Oh, okay.
Right? Sorry, no offense, bud, but it is high school according to, 'cause I had, we were talking on the phone one day.
Yeah, I mean, I read the, I think I looked up the law in itself.
I think it is.
I'm, I'm just, and there were years where we've, we, we were lucky enough to have one, but with the inconsistency, now we've got two administrators that have been here two years, so that's good. Um, but I think it's just one of those things that fell to the cracks.
Yeah.
So, maybe we can give that another push. And e- even if it's not immediate and it's something that they wanna do, um, next, next school year, but I also would entertain, I think it's cool how some towns around the country and do like a, uh, student mayor, you know, for the day or something like that. I would entertain like a, a co-chair, um, at, for any grade level that would come and sell.
It is high school.
It is high school, yeah, she's looked it up. But I would also entertain like coming to a meeting and being like a co-chair for a meeting, helping with things like the pledge and, um, you know.
I love that.
I could sit and sort of coach, coach, and I would entertain that at any level.
Okay.
Um, so that's kind of a cool thing that we could put together. I'd love to have like a first grader sitting here and helping me run the show.
Oh, my gosh.
Again, no offense to older kids.
Um.
I think it'd be great.
All right, uh, so.
It's a good way to get more community members and public participation, too.
Absolutely.
Honestly. So, I think that's a no-brainer. Love it.
Emergency Management or Safety Committee has been, Mrs. Lozey, I, unless she's vehemently against it, I think it makes sense to have you continue.
That's fine.
There's been a lot of work done on that committee and the continuity, I think it just will be helpful.
Yeah.
Um, you were an alternate for that. Are you?
Sure, just put me down for everything.
What are you?
No problem.
Hopefully my stipends a little more this year.
What, one, two?
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding, yes.
I'll entertain that motion.
One, someday when I get a real job, I might not be able to.
I'll make that motion. Mrs. Lozey with Mrs. Doyle as an alternate.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Parker. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, Athletic Committee, uh, we were not as active this year. However, in, I've had recent conversations with Mr. Moser, unless someone's jumped, wants to jump at it, I, I would prefer to stay on it.
I agree. Yeah, that's fine.
We are almost done, and I'm gonna solicit feedback from coaches on the coaches handbook, and then we really have to tackle the, the athletic handbook, there's some things in there that need to be updated and stuff, and, uh, so I would like to, uh, remain on that unless someone else wants to.
I agree.
I'll entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Nominate Joel.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle, second by Mrs. Johnston. All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, Professional Development Committee has been a committee that is pretty quiet, unless we're working on a, a master plan, but we've got five years in place, and I think we're only on year two.
Two.
I think. Do you wanna remain on it in case there's something?
I mean, I could stay on it in case we need, yeah, that's, I'm fine with that.
Nervous to ask you now?
I was just being, I was just being funny. Had to lighten it up. It was a boring meeting.
I don't know, six, go on six, can I use the mental?
Boring start to the meeting. I know.
Well, this is the business.
That's why I said, increase my stipend.
I'll make a motion to have Nicole be on the develop, uh, professional development.
Motion by Mrs. Lozey.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Think?
He's fourteen.
That's it.
Job.
Thank you.
Can I just see that while you're?
Oh, yeah.
Or do you?
I didn't write it for someone else to read.
Oh, I can read it.
Is there any public participation at this time? If not, you're on the agenda. If not, we're going to move into our crosswalk proposal. I understand we've already done half the work at the selectmen's meeting. I'm going to ask you to state your name for the record so we can put your name in the minutes. You're now famous Brady Wentworth. How are you?
Good.
Tell us about your crosswalk plan.
So I'm here with my principal, Ms. Palmeroy, to talk about a safety issue that affects many of us after school. As you know, we have sidewalks that run alongside the hill in front of the school. And there's a crosswalk that's at the side of the sidewalk that goes into the dirt parking lot. But the problem is when school gets out, everyone wants to get home quickly. So walking all the way down the sidewalks and then to one of the existing crop, crosswalks, or the existing one adds a lot of extra time. Instead of using the longer route, many of us, including myself, end up running straight down the hill to get to our parents waiting into, waiting in the dirt parking lot. This means that we're running directly into traffic without a designated crosswalk. Cars don't expect us to be there and it creates a dangerous situation. While we've been lucky so far, it's only a matter of time before someone gets hurt. A simple solution would be to add a crosswalk at the base of the hill leading directly into the parking lot. This would create a safe, direct path for students and encourage us to avoid running into traffic. This would also make things safer and it would ease congestion and make it less stressful for parents picking up their kids. Yes, that the school board consider our request, a crosswalk at the base of the hill would make a significant difference in student safety. Thank you.
And I have like a little thing where it would be.
Do you mind bringing it over so we could take a peek at it?
We've got some all hands out for us. Good job.
Okay, well, those are being passed over. Brady, let me see if I can get this, if I pictured this correctly. The parking lot is here, the grass hill is here right across from it.
Yeah.
There, there are crosswalks a little bit further down or further up from that area?
It's, so there's a sidewalk that goes down this way. And then there's a crosswalk that kind of goes into the parking lot from where the cro, uh, the sidewalk is.
Right. So you're suggesting that there be one right smack dab in the middle of that grass hill? Yeah, I know. I'm doing it mostly for folks at home.
Sorry.
Into the dirt parking lot, right? So that's what. Does that make sense? It would go right from that sort of grassy hill somewhere right in there, I see the diagram.
Yeah.
And it would go into that dirt parking lot. Now, um, the, we don't own the road, but the selectmen are in charge of the road. I understand that you met with the selectmen. Can you tell us about that meeting?
So they, they said that, yes, they approved it, but they also, they recommended that we get a traffic study. So we're, I'm pretty sure that I'm, we're meeting with the chief at some point this week.
Okay.
To talk about that.
Mrs. Palmeroy, you and I spoke earlier, you did mention something about the chief having involvement. I didn't know what it was for. So who does, how do they do a traffic study?
So he has regulations and so forth that he has to make sure are being met. And briefly, when I spoke with him, there are some things that we need to go back to the town on. And he wants to explain it to Brady himself. The other thing that the town was wanting was to make sure that the school board would commit to putting a path down the hill. Because we had talked about, you know, the first step was the crosswalk. Second step would be a nice path so kids would know we're going to walk down there to the crosswalk. And Brady was going to be working on fundraising. And we heard that there might be some football players who might be willing to do some community service to help with that. So.
He's got connections with football.
Yeah. That's kind of where we are on that piece.
Okay. So I guess the traffic study would happen and then we would officially vote on it after the traffic. We probably wouldn't vote on anything tonight then, I don't think. I mean, we can give you our blessing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, okay, why don't we do that then? We'll vote on it and.
Continue on the traffic study.
Yeah, do any board members have questions for Brady or comments?
No, I feel like comment, like I feel like this is amazing Brady. I am down there every single day for the last few years and I still go to pick up my nephew. And it's dangerous. You have kids running every which way, you have kids coming down the hill. The two walk, the two crosswalks that are currently there, you know, they're, they're together, so you have kids coming every which way. So I think this is great. I would also love to see maybe some sort of, we're going to put that crosswalk in the middle there, some sort of, I don't know, not like a little manor, but maybe like a sign or something. Because parents and other people, maybe not even parents, like they fly. Like when I'm coming out to go around on the side of that and kids are coming down the hill where you're talking about, cars are coming pretty quickly down there.
It has to be two ways.
I know.
I know. And I get it because like people want to get through there, they want to get out of there, but it's just, yeah. So I think this is amazing, but I don't know what else we can do other than the crosswalk, but just maybe something.
Well, we have at the crosswalk at, like, no, like when you come out of my driveway to go across to School Street, there's like the.
And there's the one down on Sunset Street.
Yeah, like there's so, like an X or a blank, there's something there.
You'll also have a squirrel or alert for Brady, but I think that'll be some of what the chief talked about.
Oh, beautiful. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So that would just, yeah. And I figured that was more of like the logistics, but.
And what are we thinking, or you thinking, I should say?
Well.
For the path? Did the town have any requirements or suggestions?
So I got like a couple materials that we could use and like concrete or granite maybe. I haven't really done much about that though. I have like.
Just curious.
Yeah.
That work comes after you get the yeses.
Yes. Yes.
I'll entertain the motion to approve Brady's proposal for a crosswalk down there. Contingent, of course, into the traffic study and some of the things that we have to work on.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Parker, second by Mrs. Johnston. Any further discussion? No, I will say this. A lot of times people will see things and they'll recognize that there's a need and they'll either just complain about it or ignore it. And you did neither. You actually took some action. So that's really impressive and I'm proud of you for that. I know your parents are proud of you too. And would love to have you sitting up here as a co-chair some night because I know you have an interest in politics through the magic of Facebook. I've seen it on there. So we'll have to chat about that sometime, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Well done Brady.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you bud. I happen to know a concrete company too when we get there.
Yeah.
Oh, all these connections. All right. I, I had asked, knowing what we had for, for some non-public business tonight, I had asked for reports other than financials to be placed on, sort of just in our folder for us to digest. We have financials as well. And Mackenzie had a passing in his family that he needed to attend tonight over a week. So he's not here anyway. So we're going to put financials will be on the next agenda. Yes.
The student services, she requested if you could look at her request for proposals. And she has a couple of requests for proposals in her, um, report. And I don't know if you would like to put that off, we can, but if you get a chance to at least look at it.
Proposals that she wanted to vote on?
Mm-hmm.
It was the policy.
Oh, policy?
It was around policy.
Does she need a vote tonight or just hate voting on something like that without?
Yeah, I think the world, world would still turn. Maybe she can come to the next one.
Yeah. Yeah.
Let's put her on the next agenda.
I know Mackenzie isn't here. But looking at his, the doc, the financial documents. I know at one time we had asked to have the, uh, cat, end of month, the cash balance statements, didn't, did we not?
Yeah, that sounds familiar Stacy. I don't remember.
If he can just pop those into our folder when he's back in, that would be great.
With student services, um, she had in their graduation date. And then she also wanted to point out that they got the gardening grant.
Oh, yay.
Awesome.
And I wasn't sure who the person that you told her who, who would be interested in helping her. There was a volunteer that you guys had mentioned and I couldn't remember the name.
For gardening?
Yeah. So I wanted to get her in touch. I don't know, we can just email.
I don't remember that.
Yeah.
That was one of the unfinished business if you wanted to talk about a graduation date.
Well, that was one of the things that I had put in an email that I. It's tough to, it's tough to approve the agenda when I'm at work.
I know, I know.
And a lot of times when it comes, it's time sensitive. But are you, yeah, I would like us to, what are we looking at for a last day of school?
So originally the last day of school was supposed to be the nineteenth of June, which was a Thursday. We've had two snow days. So I don't know if, you know, we are good on hours. If we would like to maybe have Friday as an early release and then have a professional development day on the Monday.
But are we good on hours?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh. Okay, I wasn't sure if you were asking if you knew.
No, no, we are.
It, what, so your suggestion would be what? Say that again.
Uh, Friday the twentieth be an early release day. And then Monday be a professional development day.
Twenty-third.
That makes sense. And are we thinking that June thirteenth would be, or fourteenth? We graduate on a, on Saturdays right now? It's a blur. I graduated on Friday the thirteenth, so.
I know. What did, what has the graduating class said? Like I know the last two years, actually, we've had them come before us.
Yeah, they have.
Because they talked about, um, like the outside with the mic and the football field, but then the backup inside if it rained, which.
But setting the date has always been the superintendent's responsibility. We vote on it.
We, yeah, we vote on the date, but they can ask for inside or outside or what they want to.
Well, but it was different days is what I'm saying. So actually the students came before us. Yes, we voted and the superintendent brought it to us, but they came to us because, didn't they? Because they wanted like a different day. Didn't the kids like want like that?
Oh, no, they wanted it out in the courtyard.
I know we make the, I know we do that and vote on that, but the project graduation.
That wasn't in there. Yeah, they already came. That's what it was.
Yes.
So.
What did it make sense for graduation?
I don't know because I don't know typically, you haven't paid enough attention to it.
Students' last day is the twentieth. That would be finals week for underclassmen.
Right. It's, so it would, I thought it was like the second Saturday.
I have it right here.
And the, so it would be June fourteenth would be graduation.
Because their finals would be.
Athlete? I don't know which athlete.
Yeah, I just thought.
I don't know. It's usually. Well, the, it's because the month of June starts on a Sunday.
Starts on a Sunday the first.
The problem is, no, it's usually the Saturday before the last full week for underclassmen.
Right.
Right.
That's why I'm saying the fourteenth.
It seems later because usually it's like pushed up one, it's like.
It's usually like tenth, right?
Because June first falls on a Sunday. So we have seven full days, seven full days this year. You know?
I'll make a motion to set graduation for Saturday, June fourteenth.
A motion by Mrs. Lozay.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Parker. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we set a ring date? No, because we do it inside.
Well, it doesn't, it'll, I guess it'll be.
They make the decision.
Decision. Yeah, inside or out.
Some just want it inside.
Right.
Some classes just, it's hard.
Do you have to make a motion for the last day of school being an early release?
Yep.
Oh, right, I forgot about that.
So the kids will know too that wanted the project graduation. That'll be that Saturday and staff will be on board with supporting that fund on Saturday after graduation.
I hope so. Put it out to them.
Yeah.
See if there's any problems.
I just want to make sure that they know. That way they, that way the officers complain it and everything. Because I know that's something that came to us a while ago though.
Yeah, and then if there's any problems, there'll be enough time for them to come. Look on the board.
Perfect. Okay.
And I'll make a motion to set the last day of school for students as June twentieth being a half day. And PD the following Monday.
Last day for staff.
The twenty-third.
I think we had two days for PD built in because originally it was the nineteenth with one day of PD.
Okay.
So I think it would be two days of PD.
So last day for staff would be the twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Tuesday?
Mm-hmm.
What is the thoughts on what the PD would look like? Are there any thoughts yet?
Personally for me, I would like to see a lot of vertical teaming and a lot of, um, you know, reflecting on what you did this year and kind of getting those notes down so while they're fresh in your brain while you did this, on what you would change for next year. Also, if we could do stuff on rapport building and so that when you have that first week and you have advisories, you're really coming in with activities ready that will help you build rapport with students and maybe even look for a speaker.
Okay, so there's a motion.
Oh.
So the twenty-fourth was your twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth last day.
Twenty-third, twenty-fourth PD days.
Yeah.
Motion by Mrs. Lozay.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Johnston. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Speaking of speakers, I did hear the high school had a speaker last week. That was, students were saying that it was.
Was this the, okay, Mr. Moser sent me a picture. It was two, two of people, right? Wasn't one of them a former like wrestling diva?
Oh, no. Well, I don't know about that.
I need to know about these things.
I, I heard about it after the fact. I, I, I only heard about the one and it wasn't her.
He sent me a picture and she was in it.
Yours was the one that he's like a motivational speaker now. He had like a rough kind of growing up in childhood and he's like a reporter now.
Yes, 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 yes.
Reporter, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, all right. I don't know what Mr. Moser sent me then.
There was just one other thing kind of in, kind of unfinished business, new business. Well, it's, it's new business, but it's for the policy committee. So I don't know if you've noticed that, um, Title I funds could be, um, in jeopardy if we don't clean up some of our wording. And so we only have a few areas where we mentioned gender, um, in our Title IX. And so Dr. McLynche offered to go through that and redact anything that could cause any funding issues and then send it along to the policy committee.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that makes total sense.
Your blessing to be forward on that. And we had talked about that when I had first joined policy a couple of years ago about trying to just switch all of those terms and be up to par with.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of other words that may have to be taken out of stuff.
Well, and they want us to go back to prior to 2020 wording. Yes. I'm good with that. So just, yep, okay. Send it along.
All right.
Always wondering, unfinished business.
Anybody have a chance to follow up and look into open enrollment at all?
I do, a little bit. So it was when I went to that workshop for the superintendent's part B. A lot of people are really worried about open enrollment because you can take your taxpayer dollars to go elsewhere, but that's assuming that people are accepting students. So, you know, it's kind of an application and so forth. I was a little excited about it, um, because I think that we are providing a good product and it's getting better. So my thought was like, I wasn't as upset as a lot of people because I was looking at it like, oh, my gosh. You know, maybe somebody who's in Rochester and it's just too big a district for them might look at a Farmington and open enrollment and want to send their kids here. So it is coming, commitment is a thing. And, um, there's going to be obviously more to come on it, but.
Prospect Mountain does it.
Yeah.
I had a family reach out to me. I told them to contact you.
Nice.
Last week.
I know, I don't know if Prospect has changed there. I know when it started, they did it like freshman only type. I don't know if it's all grades yet or if they've moved. I, I know that's just how it started. I have not heard how it go, you know, how it's been going. I think this is what their second year or first full year? I don't know.
No, they're just starting.
They're just starting. Okay, so this is their first full year then, okay.
And there's a lot of talk about NHIAA and that you would have to play in your home district. I don't know how that's going to play out, but that was something that came up that people were thinking about that, you know, you could court athletes and that wasn't, um, something that people were interested in. But then they were also looking for, um, a push at the legislature to find out what's the accountability going to be. So if you do take your taxpayer dollars elsewhere, how, um, how do we know that your kids are learning and that you're not using that money? They used a specific example of horseback riding, you know, so.
So that, that's an interesting point about NHIA. So if then, because one of the arguments against, I think, would have been, oh, don't bring in higher population, it'll bump us up a division. But they can't do that to us if they're not allowing those students to play for a district that they're coming to.
That decision hasn't been made, but it was definitely talked about.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Okay, well, just, like, just a conversation I wanted to continue, just poking at. Why, did you have something unfinished?
Oh, I just wanted to follow up because we've had the office hours. So I just wanted to follow up Giselle because you had mentioned coming up with some sort of like a feedback form for admin, like so we could give a synopsis. So I just didn't know, like, did you want like an official, like kind of.
Give in one to Stacy.
Okay.
Yeah. Or it was like in the board folder. Now I have to find it.
Share it with you.
Yeah, maybe if we can all have access to it and then that way we can just, whoever's at those meetings, we can follow up. In a timely manner. And then we can send it back to you to disperse.
Yeah, so I think this, this email that I sent out may have gotten lost in the shuffle. I had sent it out in preparation for March thirty-first meeting, which, dummy me, that was our fifth Monday. Because I had put on there, office hours recap, setting the date for graduation. And, you know, and, and the, one of the reasons I wanted to keep the agenda light for tonight was we've got non, we've got to nominate a teaching staff tonight. We've got some non-public business, more non-public business to deal with. So I guess my only thought on that was, um.
Should we do it next week? I mean, next weekend?
Office hours recap.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just because I'd like to be able to fill out.
I know, it was, it was hot on my brain, but that's fine. I've made notes in my phone, so, yeah. So that's going to be on the next agenda.
And I'd like to just.
Karen, you're putting this down, right? Everything that I'm saying to put on the next agenda. Thank you.
And I just wanted to honor that, like, kind of like just a brief synopsis summary to get back to.
Jess sent it to you.
That's all. That they had requested. That they had requested.
Is there any public participation at this time? All right, we have manifest to sign, our next meeting is going to be April twenty-first, which is in a couple of weeks, and at this point...
Wait, I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
We have the Abraham Bartman Trust deposits authorization.
Oh, shoot, let's skip right over that.
Yeah.
Yeah, tell, go ahead.
Okay. So, we have the checks that need to be authorized, um, can I go right up for that? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, they, uh, this checks we dispersed in the seven hundred thousand in-fund balance trust deposits from last year's election. Many advise that they need to vote to release the checks to the trustees one by one, and I have the list. Um, so, there are nine checks, um, so I don't know if you want me to go through them or you want to just do the...
One by one, meaning we list them one by one in the minutes and vote on them as a lot?
That's fine with me.
Yeah, I, I don't see the need to vote on them all individually unless, that's an RSA.
That's what you said.
That I don't know about.
It's RSA thirty-five, colon, eleven, and RSA thirty-five, colon, thirteen.
I mean, do you wanna just read them off and we'll vote?
We'll just vote on each one, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, the first one is twenty-five thousand dollars, it was for the school equipment expense trust.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle, second by Mrs. Johnston, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The second one is for fifty thousand dollars for capital improvements and renovation fund.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle, second by Mrs. Johnston, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The third is, uh, for fifty thousand dollars, Farmington School District Security Capital Reserve Fund.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle, second by Mrs. Johnston, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The next is a hundred thousand dollars for the Special Education Trust.
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle, second by Mrs. Johnston, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have twenty-five thousand dollars for outdoor facilities reserve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle, second by Mrs. Johnston, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-five thousand dollars for the kitchen equipment capital reserve.
Motion.[1667.53]